Mr. President, Council members and participants, we are now live.
Thank you, and good morning to everyone. We're going to get started now. First, I would like to thank everybody for joining us this morning, to the committee at the whole. And today, we will have a conversation around redistricting. Before we start the formal announcement, wanted to say that when we introduced the legislation, we made a statement that essentially this was a template for an ultimate redistricting bill that will be passed by city council. There will likely be some additional changes to make sure that we are within the deviation, and it will continue to be ongoing conversation. Today, what we want to do is give the public a full opportunity to have a discussion in their perspective in a formal council hearing about their views and opinions about the redistricting map. So we will pretty much devote the entire day to listening to the public as it relates to this particular proposal. And thank you all very much. So, I want to make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19 and its variants, city council committees are currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft's team to make these remote hearings possible. Instructions for how the public may view and offer public testimony at public hearings of council committees are included in the public hearing notices that are published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Legal Intelligence prior to the hearing, and can be also found on phlcouncil.com. A note that the hour has come. Mr. Christmas, will you please call a roll to take attendance and members that are in attendance to say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen? Mr. Christmas, please call the roll.
Council Lady Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and all of Philadelphia. Pleasant to be here. Good morning.
Council Lady Brooks.
Good morning, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Council Lady Gaudier.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues in Philadelphia, present.
Good morning.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, good morning, Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, City of Philadelphia. It's rock and roll.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, Philadelphia. Present.
Councilman.
Good morning, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Council Lady Parker.
Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, good morning, City of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Council Lady Gill.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I am present.
Good morning.
Council Lady Conyona Sanchez.
Good morning, colleagues, good morning, Council President, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Squillen.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues, present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I'm present.
Good morning.
Council President Clark.
And good morning to all. I want to thank you. So a quorum of the committee is present, and the hearing is now called to order. This is the public hearing of the committee at the whole regarding Bill Number 220003. Mr. Christmas, would you please read the title of the bill?
Bill Number 220003, in ordinance amending Section 2500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Council Manic Districts" by revising the boundaries of the Council Manic Districts under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Before we begin testimony from the witnesses we have today, everyone has been invited to the meeting to testify should be aware that this public hearing is being recorded. Because the hearing is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are considered to be being recorded. Additionally, prior to recognizing members for the questions or comments they have for witnesses, I will note for the record, at this time, we will use the chat feature available on Microsoft's Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. Mr. Christmas. We are, before you call the next witness, I'm going to, we're going to give three minutes today. We have around 24, so that should get us in around a couple of hours. Mr. Christmas, please call the first witness to testify.
Manera Edens.
Mr. President, we will need a few minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To get the participants connected via Teams.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let's take a let's take a few moments to give our technology professionals an opportunity to connect with our witnesses today.
Thank you for calling Philadelphia City Council. A beeping noise will indicate when you are on with the host. In the meantime, enjoy this music.
Madessa, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Winna. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, Council President, we are ready to go on the technical side. Give me a cue and I'll coordinate with Channel 64 to get started.
Madessa, just, this is John Christmas. Am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay, great.
Mr. President, oh, I'm sorry, you, I well, Castle Lady Parker has joined us, but I guess when we get on channel.
I just talked to her.
Yes, sir. Okay, I'll mark the record that she's in attendance.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to chime in now with Channel 64 to get things started. I'll ask for a moment of silence to start our broadcast.
Mr. President, we are now live.
Thank you very much, Madessa. And thank you all for your patience. We will now start our testimony from our witnesses. Mr. Christmas, please call the first witness to testify.
Manera Edens.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
Yes, my name is Manera Edens. I'm from North Philly. I'm the North Philly community organizer with One PA, and I'm here to testify today on Bill Number 220003. My colleagues, community leaders, and I took part in the recent LRC state redistricting match that happened with other community organizations. It was a fun process to go through with leaders, seeing how far and close we travel in community and in our everyday lives. Leaders were shocked to see how dense some areas were compared to others. But this process took months. It took time, thinking and thought. People drew these maps together and compared them to come up with what we thought was best for the community. City councils now want to get this done in a matter of weeks, which seems like something that would just be thrown together. Our people's voices are being shut out once again. To our community, this is something bigger. Having an input in our everyday lives shouldn't be a question. This is not a job that should be done just by city council alone. This is one of many jobs that should be done by the community. City council already has a habit of drawing lines to keep their power, and we're here to make sure that this process goes in a more fair and democratic way. There is no reason that one neighborhood block share two council people to deal with. This should be something that should be left in the hands of the community. History has shown us this. More community input should be something that you lean towards anyway. This is another example of how they think we're going to let y'all take power away from us. It's not going to happen. What we want is time. Time to say we actually put thought into this process. Two weeks is not enough time. We want this to seem like a fair process. Superior Maps to ours, give us time for feedback. The community needs to have their feed, their input being heard. How are we going to make sure that your constituents are being heard? That's what we want to know today. So thank you, and I hope that you guys vote to let the community have more input and community decisions like this.
Thank you.
Thank you, and have a nice day.
Thank you for your testimony, we appreciate it.
The next witness is Howard Fisher.
Good morning. I'll state your name for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Howard Fisher, and I'm a canvasser with One PA, and I'm testifying in regards to Bill Number 220003. My experience of building our unity maps, which are a visual aid of how we draw their ideas of how, what legislative map should be, was surprisingly easy and fulfilling. These maps included taking down where people go to worship, grocery shop, go to school, and work. I thought this was going to be a cumbersome campaign, but in reality, people were appalled at how they weren't involved in the process. I used my own experience to build connections with these people to get them to build these maps with us. So a little about my story is, I was incarcerated for a decade and a half, and during that time, legislative districts were being redrawn. The practice known as prison gerrymandering used myself and those I was incarcerated with for their township all the way up in those mountains. This gave them additional resources and political power. Meanwhile, my hometown, North Philadelphia, was being disenfranchised from the same resources and political power they were, they rightfully should have. People needed to fix their schools and recreation centers for their children, while somebody else was carving out our maps with none of our input. They get a chance to stack all these resources for themselves and leave their, leave my hometown with, without the proper resources. When I told people about this, they were shocked. They had no idea that this was going on and were appalled that this was. But people were highly motivated to get involved and change this. They got educated, took the time to think about it, and spread the word about it. We would, we would be there taking about, talking about this, and they wanted to know about this as quick as possible and spread the word because they felt left out. We live in a city and a state that set a precedent in 2020, the 2020-20 election. Well, not only to ensure the loss of, Trump loss, but how to defend elections from authoritarian and anti-democratic forces. We set a precedent then, and then we can set a precedent now. But not including, by not including people in the redistricting process is not to be, is to be anti-democratic. We can't run the risk, especially at this, at a time like this. I came out here to do this work because of what was at risk, democracy being stolen. But what I don't understand is now that city councils turn to redraw their maps, the city councils turn to redraw the maps, and they do it behind closed doors. Then give people two weeks and one public comment, and things are just done just like that. That doesn't sound democratic to me. Good day.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Next witness, Dante McCall.
Good morning. State your name for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
Our next witness is.
General. Mr. Hall.
Christine Kennedy. Christine Kennedy.
Mr. McCall.
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, okay. You are.
Yes, Mr. President, it looks like we are going to be hearing from witness Christine Kennedy right now.
Okay.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Just state your name for the record, please proceed.
Sure, my name is Christine Kennedy. I'm the executive director of the Northern Liberties Business Improvement District. So thank you very much for having me here today and allowing me to speak on behalf of the business community here in Northern Liberties that I represent. I appreciate how fraught the process must be for redistricting, how difficult it is making decisions about where boundary lines are. I will kind of say, just to echo a few of the things that have already said, I actually tried to get involved in this process early, and I had reached out to try to get a sense of when things were scheduled, when there were going to be community meetings, when there was going to be input sessions, and kind of got punted a couple of times, and then lo, we have today's hearing about maps that are already drawn. So just to kind of echo what people before me have said, I did, I did find the process of having community input to be a little frustrating. That being said, I'm here to represent the business community in Northern Liberties, and looking at the maps, I do appreciate the kind of effort that was put into at least our portion of Philadelphia to consolidate our business district and our neighborhood. You know, there've been numerous instances where there's just been a lot of confusion, and I think that this is what everybody in Philadelphia often feels when their community is split between council manic districts. Who responds to what? Who gets, who do we reach out to for a response or for assistance with anything? So at least for our community, if it can be at least upheld as an example of maybe when it's done better, we see the map, the new map is being beneficial to us, our portion of Philadelphia at least. I think it'll, it'll help streamline some responses and. Um, I think it'll, uh, it'll help streamline some, um, some responses, um, and, uh, engagement. Um, and will reduce some confusion, um, for anybody who's involved in constituent services, uh, myself included. Um, so I just, uh, wanted to thank, um, both of, both of our council persons for, um, for putting the thought into, um, how their two districts abut, um, in our part of town. And, um, thank you. That's it.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Next witness, Alicia Dorsey.
Good morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Mr. President, we just called in Dante McCall. He was the previous caller. He is now ready for his, uh-
Mr. McCall, okay. Ms- Mr. McCall.
Hello.
Yeah, hi. Just state your name for the record. Read the record, please.
Yes, Dante McCall.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, greetings, members of the council, family, friends, and all of those watching. My name is Dante McCall. I am a, I am the West By Southwest Organizer with One PA, and I'll be speaking about Bill Number Two-Two-Zero-Zero-Zero-Three. I come today as a concerned citizen whom was like many that believe their voice matter. Participated alongside our fellow community members. One PA built a unity map, a community, a community-driven process that envisioned what redistricting could look like when the community is in charge of the map drawing. This was submitted to the LRC for their state redistricting map, a process we believe would best represent our Philadelphia. Our Philadelphia, a properly divided map by the constituents in which it serves. Over a hundred fifty members and many of our youth, like myself, participated in the drawing of these maps. This was the first time feeling a part of a process they felt had a direct impact on their lives, power as an individual, and their future. While, while this process had its flaws, we can say that the state maps do reflect our input, and we were happy that that was the case. Only to turn and have our city council decide that their process will take a few weeks with only one public comment opportunity. When people are alienated like this, it's no wonder people feel like their voice doesn't matter and furthering the narrative of why youth don't vote. Representation is supposed to mean our voice are properly heard and not shut out as if we lack volume. How districts are drawn should not only depend on developers and where they want to, where they want new property to be built. The power, these power dynamics shouldn't drastically change future elections. Let's bring a fresh balance to the voice of this great city and allow the everyday person who in our minds is best suited and has a relationship with the area they serve in a fair shape. Most importantly, my community and communities like mine have the space to work collectively and have the real-world power to see our equal share of political and policies prioritized, ushered into law. This is, this is what true democracy looks, feels, and breathes like. We ask that you all don't rush, don't outsource for solutions, but work with the people of the city, some of whom voted you all in those very seats. Learn from the community so you can understand that what they, what they are, what are the necessary adjustments to the maps provided by the people and give, and give our community a chance to respond with feedback that we may come to an agreement. But not even giving an opportunity for the people to be a part of this process to draw new city maps is basically telling us we don't know what's best for us. And that's, and if that's how you feel, then what does that say about our votes? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Next witness, Terrell Grant.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Mr. President, we have Alicia Dorsey. Tom Grant is not available at this time.
Okay. Ms. Dorsey, state, just state your name for the record, please.
Good morning. I'm Alicia Dorsey. I'm family community advocate, PA Vota Court Watch, addressing concerns for Bill Twenty-Two-Zero-Zero-Three, redistricting and prison gerrymandering. I'm advocating for social justice of our census allocations to stop violence in our city. Pennsylvania stopped counting inmates as residents in prisons, prison counties eight sixteen twenty-one. My concern is that we are only counted as residents of prison communities for census allocations. The census dictates billions of dollars for public resources and also population counts for redistricting. If our state is no longer counting our brothers and sisters as residents of prison counties, then why is Philadelphia? This is money needed for our social, AKA, public resources, our schools, our libraries, rec centers, hospitals, roads, affordable housing, and family community support services. I'm right now in need of affordable housing. Like, I'm not sure what you all consider affordable housing, but way too many mattresses and belongings are laying around the streets of Philadelphia. We need social justice with our census allocations in our communities. At least twenty-one thousand per inmate per year for the next ten years is what we will lose if city council continues to practice a prison gerrymandering. So, if our sisters and brothers come home within those ten years, the census allocations will remain in the prison counties. We can't afford that. With social justice, we will gain more votes in our communities because we will have bigger population counts when we imprison gerrymandering in Philadelphia. Our communities are starving for resources, support services, and better roads. We need affordable housing, AKA seven fifty a month for one bed room. COVID inflation is taking deeper tolls on our communities. We need all of our census alloc- allocations. Philadelphia can take a huge step in ending the violence in our city by ending the practice of prison gerrymandering to restore the social justice of our census allocation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next witness is Pat, oh, Scott Wickhander.
Morning.
Hello. Good morning.
Just, just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Scott Wickhander, um, and I am a Philadelphia resident, a voter, father, homeowner. Um, I'm testifying on, uh, Bill Two-Two-Zero-Zero-Three. Um, I had two main comments. Um, the first one being, um, just the, uh, transparency and communication on the redistricting efforts. Um, you know, I personally, uh, reached out and contacted various, um, voter organizations. So, I received some information, but even with that, even with being, uh, somebody who's actively trying to follow the process, I still, uh, getting information was very, very difficult. So, it definitely feels like there needs to be much better communication on the process to the general public. I don't know how the average person would have any idea what's going on with redistricting, um, because I'm actively following it, and it's hard for me to know what's going on. Um, the second, uh, issue I wanted to bring up, um, was last year, um, at the beginning of the process, I had heard that there, the plan was to no longer count, uh, incarcerated persons in the districts where the prison is located and instead count them in their home districts. And now I'm hearing that that is not going to be, be the case. And, um, I mean, this seems like a massive issue. Um, first off, it just flies in the face of democracy. You have this population of people that is essentially being forced against their will to live in a certain part of the state. Um, and then you're saying that they are quote-unquote residents of that district, even though they have no choice, no agency in the matter. Um, this seems antithetical to democracy. It also seems antithetical to the, the whole process because now theoretically, you're putting power into the hands of prison officials to decide representation and funding. It may seem far-fetched, but theoretically, you could have a prison administrator moving prisoners around and determining population and representation. Um, so, th- th- how this practice is considered legal and acceptable is just mind-boggling to me. So, um, it's just, uh, something that needs to be addressed and addressed quickly. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next witness is Pat Christmas.
Good morning. Uh, just state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, uh, members of, uh, city council. My name is Pat Christmas. I'm the Policy Director for the Committee Seventy. Uh, I do ap- apologize, uh, that I may not be speaking all that clearly. I've been coming two weeks off of a jaw surgery, and my teeth are bound shut. So, I will sp- I will try to enunciate my words this morning. Uh, with the, with the time available, um, I would just like to highlight, uh, several points in the written testimony we shared with council and the preliminary report we shared with council several weeks ago, uh, that is the culmination of work that goes back six months now with members of the community across the city of Philadelphia. Uh, this involved virtual workshops, uh, community meetings across the city, survey work. Um, people really do care a great deal about this issue and this process, as, as we've heard already this morning. You know, we, we do understand, everyone understands there's, there's a lot happening in the world, a lot of very serious issues, and, and this is, this is just one of them. Uh, but this does matter a great deal, and that, uh, we won't be doing this again for ten years. And now, now if we, we land on in this cycle, uh, we will use for three city elections and twelve years of representation. So, it really matters a great deal what the final, what the final result is. Uh, uh, of, of our, our top-level findings, I'd like to highlight that keeping communities whole was, was really the top priority. We hear this constantly around congressional districts, constantly around legislative districts. This is what, what folks wanna see in, in the, in the city council map. This means keeping neighborhoods whole, keeping ethnic and language groups whole, keeping business corridors whole to the greatest extent possible. Uh, now, there's no perfect map out there. There's no way you could possibly keep every community whole across the city and also satisfy population equality requirements. But, you know, when you look at any given, uh, mapping proposal, you gotta ask, what is it trying to achieve? And that's, and that's the question we should ask about, and that was put forward last week. Uh, we shared just an alternative sample map in our written testimony. Uh, any map that's put forward, that's the big question. What is it trying to achieve? So, you know, there, there are a number of different complications to that, and this, uh, this is also admittedly not easy. It is not easy to draw a, a solid map. Uh, but there are complications around Oxford Circle and Castro Avenue, Bay's foot, Logan and Omni. And then one of the most fraught parts of the city, of course, is, is Kensington, Port Richmond, Fishtown, or the Liberties, uh, and East and South Kensington in particular. So, um, that, that said, you know, there are all sorts of variations about how, around how we can do this. I will also note that in many parts of the city, we've heard that folks are okay with the boundaries where they are, right? The cores of these districts have been the same for decades, and many, many felt all these don't wanna move the districts, uh, boundaries nearby them, which sometimes makes things easier and sometimes makes things harder. Uh, so I would just, I would urge this body to consider the observations, uh, we shared in our written testimony, the observations, uh, we listen to report, and gives, give them some degree of weight. And we, we did not hear from anybody by no, by no, by any means, but we did hear from a lot of people. Uh, and we would just, we would urge you to consider those, those observations when you consider the changes and, and approve the changes, uh, in the, in the upcoming version. Now, a lot has already been said about the prison gerrymandering issue. Of course, this, this is very important. We've been, we've been calling for this for, for months. Um, I'll just, I'll make clear that, you know, the state legislative data, the, actually, I'm, I'm sorry, is that my, is my time up there?
Yep. Thirty seconds to conclude your remarks.
Okay, thank you. Now, the, the state, the state adjusted prison data, that's already valid, but just gotta load that into the mapping platform. This isn't, the, the city adjusted data, that would require some work with the Kenny administration, but that's, that's completely possible. They address data there. It just requires some time to reallocate those individuals who were held during two thousand twenty, that's at their home district. Most of those folks, of course, will be coming out of the six districts, back into their, their home district, wherever that would be. So, uh, again, urge you to take your time with this. There's no reason we have to get this done right away, and we do want the best possible now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. I, I just wanted to say I was prepared to just not comment. This issue with respect to the redistricting process, and I don't know what it's like in the state or federal. City council does have the ability, uh, to, uh, alter its district in the interim year. So, it's not like we can't do anything until the next census ten years ago. We traditionally don't do that, uh, but this whole issue around prison population causes me to speak about this. If there's somehow ruled that the prison population will ultimately be assigned to the, the origin of that individual, there is the ability. So, that's not, I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen, but we have the ability to change after, but we must have, uh, this done by the twelfth, uh, within the deviation, and we also, if there are any additional changes in the interim timeframe, it still must meet that, that deviation requirements by law. So, I just wanna say that for the record, 'cause I know there's been a number of questions about prison population, and, you know, we agree, uh, should be counted. Uh, and we know why it was done. It was about bringing goods and services to that particular community where the prisons, uh, ended up being built. And, and that was part of a process that was intentional. But thank you. Um, Mr. Christmas, call the next name.
Alex Malone.
Good morning. Take your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Uh, sorry, I had to take my phone off. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Alexandra Malone. I live in the Second District, um, and I was calling, I'm not calling on behalf of any organization. I'm calling on my own. Um, just a few quick points, 'cause some of these have already been stated. Um, I was, uh, calling that this map should be, um, redone on the basis that we are still prison gerrymandering. Meanwhile, the State, uh, Redistricting Commission has voted to end that practice. So, when the state, um, which is not known for creating, uh, well-balanced districts that are representative, um, and which is currently going on in Harrisburg right now, um, is moving to end prison gerrymandering. The city shouldn't also still be doing that practice. I think that that is bad, um, both for democracy and also just on an ethical, uh, basis. Um, I was also, um, calling that there's a, which was, uh, raised in an Inquirer article. Uh, there's a problem where the map is not within ten percentage points of each other, which is a problem since the Supreme Court ruled on that. Uh, the Fourth District would be ten point two points, uh, smaller than the Sixth District, which is technically a violation of that principle, which would expose the city to legal challenge should the map be brought to court, which would be a needless expense for the city at the moment, and it's just a needless error. It's very easily correctable. Um, and then I was, my final point was that the, the map is not very compact. It's needlessly breaking up various districts. Well, it's ver- needlessly breaking up various neighborhoods, um, very bizarrely, uh, such as where the Third District is now crossing the Schuylkill River and taking a small chunk of Brewery Town. Uh, Fishtown Northern Libs is being sliced and diced into multiple different districts, but that's one of the fastest-growing areas of the city. Uh, the Second District crosses Broad Street and takes this bizarre chunk of Hawthorne. And the Third and the Second District have a weird shape around Elmwood Park, where it almost looks like the Second District is trying to bite Elmwood, Elmwood Park off of the, uh, off of the map. And this is, um, this isn't very compact, and that just results in bad, and it results in all sorts of election ch- chicanery, which anyone can go and look up on their own if they're curious on to why the mathematics of that works out. So, those are, those are my comments, and I would hope that the, uh, the council rejects the current proposed map and goes back to the drawing board to address those, those issues to make a better Philadelphia going forward.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next witness is Alex Stein.
Hey, guys. My name's Alex Stein. Uh, I live in District Two, and the reason why I'm, you know, here today to speak is because, like, our vaccination numbers in the black community is terrible. It's absolutely ridiculous. And we need to somehow figure how can we get those numbers up. And one way that, um, our research is showing is that a lot of black people are having hesitation because of the Tuskegee Syphilis Experiment. And so, listen, I have a lot of white guilt as a professional myself. And so, listen, I have a lot of white guilt as a professional myself, you know.
Sir.
I hate.
Sir.
Yes.
One second, one second. Is this tied to the redistricting issue?
Of course, yeah, because the redistricting issue is a race. So that's, that's the, the seed of my whole statement. It, you know, it, can I have my three minutes so I can make my point?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure you knew what we were, uh.
But what I'm saying is, when it, I know, but when it comes to the gerrymandering, look at this. It, it's typical in line with our vaccination numbers in the black community. It's, we are using black people as pawns in a chess game that only benefits white people. And if you cannot see that, that you can see the vaccination numbers are a clear representation of that because people are afraid because things like the Tuskegee syphilis experiment, you know, from 1942 to 1972, they injected black sharecroppers with syphilis and then they even had to cure for it, penicillin, and they still didn't give it to them because they wanted to spread the disease. And as a white man, it was white people that did that. So I have a lot of guilt. And now I'm seeing this gerrymandering stuff. It almost makes me, uh, really depressed and emotional because I'm seeing once again, the white man is, is obviously causing all these issues and we just, we really have to even the score. I don't know how we do it, but like, like I look at George Floyd as a great representation of, of, you know, he's like my personal hero. We need more George Floyds. We only had one George Floyd. We need a new George Floyd. That's how we fix these problems. That's how we fix the gerrymandering. It's not going to be, oh, one small thing in a Philly city council meeting is going to fix it. No, we need like somebody new, somebody hot, like, you know, uh, I don't even know, like Tupac. We need like a new Tupac to help us. And so, you know, uh, what I'm trying to do is like, I want to make the gerrymandering laws cool. I don't want to be a fool. I go swimming in the pool because I'm feeling cool. How do you feel? Yes, I am white. No, that's not right. I got a lot of guilt for the things that I did. Yes, it was a sin. Am I going to hell? I gotta make bail. Jail reform is very important. We got to get the haters out of jail. Can they make bail? I'm a bail bondsman. Yes, you can. Try me. Don't deny me. I'm trying to help. I got the guilt on my chest. I'm not the best and I'm emotionally wrecked. I can't sleep at night. I'm constantly up. I have 17 cats. My wife just left me for this guy, this Filipino guy at, at her job. And he was, he was, he's only 17 years old, but I, I, it just, it's, oh my gosh, it doesn't make sense. I mean, I.
I want to order council president. I want to order council president.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Councilman Jackson. Council president, is this information germane to the topic that we're discussing?
Well, it's about the gerrymandering laws. And what I'm saying is I think the cook now is like 22, but they had something going on for a long time behind my back. But what I'm saying is I'm an emotional wreck and I got to fix this system.
You're, you're top. Thank you for your testimony and your rep. Thank you.
Our, our next witness is Andrew Ortega.
Good morning. Uh, just state your name. And proceed with your testimony, please.
Yes, my name is Andrew Ortega. I'm a resident of East Kensington in the first district. Um, here to comment about bill two, two, zero, 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 three. Very quickly, I'd like to state that I believe splitting of neighborhoods is bad. Uh, we need consistency for planning and development purposes. This cracking of neighborhoods creates confused representation and create a situation where there, there is no ease of communication. Residents are unsure of who to speak to. Within my own zip code, we have three different council districts, which overly complicates even the simplest of projects. I believe having such a fractured representation in a neighborhood creates the impact that certain voices can have through the watering down of their representation. I believe this map should be rethought and a longer public process involved. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next witness is John Geedy.
Good morning. State your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Uh, this is just eating. Um, thank you so much, uh, for, uh, giving me the opportunity to testify today. Um, my name is John Geeding and I'm a democratic committee person for division eighteen ten and a community leader here in Fishtown. Uh, I'm testifying today, uh, because I'm concerned about what has been proposed for the eighteenth ward map, uh, where the center of the Fishtown neighborhood is once again proposed to be split into three different council districts. Um, I'm requesting that council please amend the map to make the eighteenth ward districts more compact and keep Fishtown together as one neighborhood. Um, one of the top priorities that I've heard from many other people in our community, uh, longtime neighbors, neighborhood nonprofits and local business owners over the years has been, uh, to undo the three-way district split that divides our neighborhood's voice in city politics and have a single council person representing Fishtown. Um, many of our neighbors are upset to see that the proposed map actually divides us even further. Um, for example, in one section of the proposed map, um, covering the sixth, seventh and tenth divisions of the eighteenth ward, uh, there's a point one mile section where a pretty typical walk through the neighborhood, uh, would have neighbors passing through three separate council districts. So, um, really does a number on it. But, um, yeah, this is confusing for our neighbors and it makes it very difficult for our neighborhoods in the ward, uh, more generally to organize and ask for comprehensive solutions to the problems that we need to solve in our community. Uh, the corner of Front and Gerard now sits at the intersection of three council districts and really needs some comprehensive attention, but currently it kind of gets the least, uh, tender of love and care from the city. So, um, while I have no particular preference for which representative would represent us, I would prefer that the Fishtown neighborhood be kept whole under just one council district to the extent possible, or at least be made more compact to be represented by the fewest possible council members. Um, I would suggest looking at Frankfurt Avenue as a possible district boundary since, uh, several divisions in the eighteenth ward already use that as a border and it would make it easier for neighbors to understand, uh, where the boundary is. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to testify and I hope that you will take this request into consideration as you make amendments. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Next witness is Peter Willenon.
Good morning. I'll state your name. And please.
Good morning. My name is Peter Willenon. Uh, I'm a homeowner in the eighteenth ward, also representing myself, but an active member of the Fishtown Neighborhood Association and the River Ward area Democrats. Um, really my testimony, uh, echoes what we've heard from the last couple of speakers. Uh, I found it, um, very, uh, concerning both the process here, uh, being closed and lacking public input and the final map and would urge council not to pass, uh, the maps as proposed. Um, and especially, uh, for our own situation here in the eighteenth ward, as we've just heard, uh, this, uh, increasing, you know, division of our neighborhood among council districts, uh, as, as I've lived here, I've seen really feels like we are already have felt the impact of that and sort of a lack of attention to things like, uh, creating new green spaces and open spaces in the neighborhood, uh, for the community to serve the growing population, uh, feels like we really, uh, often get poor public services. Um, and so, you know, I think that we, we are directly harmed by having our, our community split, uh, in this way. And we've heard, uh, from previous witnesses about other communities across the city being split unnecessarily. Uh, so I would urge the council, uh, to take a pause, not pa- pass the maps as is, and please try to revise them, uh, to especially, uh, address the situation in the eighteenth ward. Uh, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Next witness, Dennis Devine.
Good morning. Uh, just state your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Hi, thank you. My name is Dennis Devine. I'm a Fishtown resident and a community organizer and the Democratic, uh, party committee person for division eighteen seven. And, uh, echoing what some of my neighbors and fellow organizers just, just talked about right before, uh, my division is the tail of the fishtail that extends into, uh, Fishtown that sort of, uh, connects three, three different council districts under the proposed map. And it really doesn't seem to, to help us too much to have three, uh, council people representing us. And I, I'm pleased to say that I, I've been lucky enough to work with, uh, both, uh, councilman, uh, councilperson Squilla and councilperson, you know, Sanchez, and of course, council president Clark. And all three of them have been very help, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I hope you can still hear me. Um, but, uh, the, the, the challenge is that, um, having three is very confusing for the people I work with, the people I attempt to organize, the people I, I work with all the time. I, I take my kids and I, I try to organize for better recreation facilities. I want to thank everybody again for the rebuild project and, uh, and funding process that's helping out so many neighborhoods. Uh, but, you know, recess and, and recreation opportunities are really important. And the three places that we go often are in three different council pres- uh, council districts. If I walk two blocks in one direction, I'm in, uh, council district seven under the proposed map. If I walk one block in the other direction, I'm in council district one. And if I walk, if I stay where I am, I'm in council district five. That doesn't really help us. I, I like all three of our council people. I would prefer one of them. No offense to either one of the three, but I would prefer one of them because I think it would really help our neighborhood and help our, our residents get the, uh, the services they want and, and the answers, the accountability they deserve. So thank you very much. Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm testifying on, uh, bill number two, two, zero, 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 three. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it. Keep up the good work with the children.
Next witness, Alfred Klosterman.
Morning. Uh, just state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Alfred Klosterman. I live in Harrogate. I'm a member of Harrogate Civic Association, though today I'm speaking on my own behalf. And in general, the community has been pretty upset about the secrecy about all the redistricting and the fact that there's been no community hearings to determine what's best for the community. Now, our community in particular has some specific problems that are really being affected by this. We, we in Harrogate are basically connected with the Kensington community, both economically and socially. We, we're demographically the same. We're in district one. Now, we're being moved into district six, which we have nothing in common with. They're wider, they're wealthier, and they really, we know nothing about them. They know nothing about us. Now, we're currently served by council members Squilla and Quinona Sanchez. And our community has worked with them for over three years trying to solve our problems. If you know, along Kensington Avenue, we have over 700 homeless drug users living on the street. And for over three years, we've been working to fix these problems. And they and the community know where the slog has been. And now for council to suddenly say, never mind, go find yourself another council person, well, that just doesn't make sense. It's an insult and it's harmful to our community. And in general, that's all I'm hearing from my neighbors and my fellow members. And we would appreciate a chance to have community hearings and that council knows just how harmful this would be to us. The, the fact that Kensington and Allagany, that commu- that intersection of that, that heart of the community would be represented by three different council members just makes no sense. And other speakers today have said the same. You can't have an intersection represented by three people. And basically that's, that's the whole point I have to make and I'll close it at that. I just ask you to please allow for community involvement and meetings. You know, don't harm us like this without knowing what harm you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Next witness is Stephen Nelson.
Good morning. I'll state your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Yes. Hello. Good morning, council. Uh, my name is Stephen Nelson. I'm calling to talk about the same bill, the redistricting that everyone else has been referring to. Uh, my fiance and I are new Philadelphia residents in Germantown. I'm here today to provide input, uh, regarding the council's proposed maps. Uh, as, as already noted, the proposed map may be challenged as violating the one person, one princ- one person, one vote principle of election law. Uh, and from your statements, it's, it's clear that council members are aware of the potential challenges, legal fees and, and possibility of the maps being overturned. I would just like to provide one other reason to avoid adopting that map as proposed, uh, or any other that, that violates that principle, um, of the 10%. Uh, beyond those concerns, my worry with, with those districts is now that they'll be challenged and overturned, but they will be challenged and it will provide an opportunity for this Supreme Court to reconsider that one person, one vote principle. Uh, while the Supreme Court unanimously upheld this as recently as 2016, uh, Justice Thomas concurred in that decision and provided reason, I think, for concern. Uh, in that concurrence, he noted that the majority has failed to provide a sound basis for the one person, one vote principle. Because no such basis exists, the constitution does not prescribe any one basis for apportionment within the state. So the current Supreme Court with its three newest members especially has already shown it does not have high regard for precedent. So I would urge you to not allow them an opportunity to revisit this principle at all. Uh, I suspect such an outcome is far more likely to be to the detriment of Philadelphia's people than to their benefit. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Next witness is Linda Miller.
Morning. Um, just state your name for the record.
Name?
Please proceed with your testimony.
Yes. Good morning. My name is Linda Miller. Good morning. I'm council president Clark and council members. Can you hear me?
We absolutely can.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before city council today. I'm a longtime resident and advocate who lives in East Mount Airy, so, in Philadelphia, of course. I am proud to live in a diverse community where neighbors work together to address issues that might affect their lives. I am ac- I am an active member of the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Coalition of 100 Black Women Pennsylvania Chapter, Black Women's Leadership, Enon Tabernacle Baptist Church, where I served as a trustee on the board. Today I speak as a voter and resident of the eighth councilmatic district. Redistricting is the process of redrawing council districts every 10 years based on numerous criteria, including population and geographical boundaries. The process of redistricting is governed by the United States Constitution, the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965, as well as state constitutional and statutory provisions. Once the census was released, of course, there's new population figures. New districts have to be drawn to create districts that are equal or as close to equal in population. Which brings me to the first point in my testimony. Every city council district should have equal representation. The proposed map shows deviation that does not reflect an equal division of each councilmatic district. That should not happen. I live in the eighth councilmatic district and looking at those numbers, my numbers are not as large as the largest councilmatic district, which is over 172,000. Also in the proposed map, numerous communities of color and of interest have been split. If we are truly a city of neighborhoods, then we should do all that we can to conserve the integrity of a community. Measures should be taken to minimize the divisions in a community. Finally, I'd like to close in on an issue that is always in the middle of redistricting. Gerrymandering. Prison gerrymandering cannot be tolerated in Philadelphia. The proposed map did not adjust Philadelphia census data to ensure that incarcerated people are accounted in the districts where they last lived, rather than in the areas where their jails or prisons are located. The practice of prison-based gerrymandering also defies logic. Most incarcerated people are not residents of the district where they are incarcerated and have no social, economic, or civic ties to the communities just beyond the prison walls. In essence, the voices of community members in an incarcerated individual's home are lessened with prison-based gerrymandering. In closing, I come before the body to encourage you to vote no for city council bill two, two, zero, 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 three and redraw a map that illustrates fair representation, keeps intact as many communities of interest as possible, and adjusts imbalanced councilmatic districts by reallocating prison population to the community where it belongs, where the prisoner resided before. to the community where it belongs, where the prisoner resided before incarceration. And I did hear you, Council President Clark, earlier where you said, "City Council will adjust that to make sure prison gerrymandering does not exist in Philadelphia." I hope that process takes place within this current city council calendar year and we don't have to wait for another ten years. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you today.
Ms. Miller, before you disconnect, thank you. And for that reference, I just want to make sure you heard what I said. I said, "City Council has the capability in the interim to adjust this map to reflect the prison population issue." So, I don't speak for everybody on City Council. That's why I said we have the authority and the capability. The information with respects to the prison population is not, was not a part of our conversation simply because we did not have that information. But if that information and when it becomes available to City Council, if the members decide that they would like to address that issue based on the shift and the potential impact on the population, that's something that we have the authority to do. I just wanted to...
Does that mean you would let the public know when that occurs, Council President?
We are required by law, the city charter, which we are governed by, to have a public hearing and notification and not only at the hearing, but also a public comment prior to the passage of the bill. And that's something that frankly is beneficial to all of us in the city of Philadelphia. Because as you know, the census determines the level of resources particularly that we get from the federal government. And as I said, it was intentional that that prison population was counted in the counties where the prisons are and not the place where the individuals originated as it relates to their residence for that sole purpose of getting additional resources in those counties where those prisons were. So, that's something that we want to take advantage of. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that clarification.
You're welcome. Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Our final witness is Melissa Robbins.
Melissa Robbins.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilmember, Council President, and the listening Philadelphian taxpayers. My name is Melissa Robbins, Executive Director of Near Northeast Against Racism. I'm testifying on Bill Number Two-Two-Zero-Zero-Zero-Three. To be clear, it is not enough to say that as a leader you stand against racism. It is crucial to assume the position of an anti-racist. In doing so, you are able to move and shape policy through a lens of an anti-racist. When we look at the demographic makeup of the correctional facilities on State Road, we clearly see that incarcerated individuals, primarily black, who come from north and southwest Philly, these individuals have the right to be counted in their own prospective councilmatic districts based on their home address of record. But they also have the right to have their elected leaders advocate on their behalf. They're currently being counted and have historically been counted in the Sixth Councilmatic District, which is primarily made up of light residents and formally led by Bobby Heenan. I don't ever recall Heenan going on record to advocate for our prison population or suggesting that we end prison gerrymandering. These practices distort political representation and must be made right. We have elections every six months, and if we do not do right and right this particular wrong, over five thousand people will continue to be underrepresented and included in a wider population count that does not give the power to the district that they rightfully belong in. I'm also extremely disappointed in the current process that not only silences the voices of all of our residents, but does not allow time for stakeholders and voters to understand how their input could essentially give the outcome that we, the people, deserve and desire. We are living in a time where our rights are constantly under attack. We must have leadership that responsibly leads as visionaries, and that means staying ahead of our challenges by keeping our taxpayers informed and ensuring that we are always a part of the public process like we see in our surrounding jurisdictions. Another concern is the number of people being counted in the First and Fifth, uh, First Districts, the First and the Fifth Districts. Again, these districts are primarily white, granting more power to the districts with higher median incomes and salaries. And those who are newer residents to our city, the voices of those of us who have been here for decades are continued silence through leadership, and that does not acknowledge the plight, the pain, and the continued oppression of the black people in this city who are the primary people who are in poverty. I live in the Tenth Councilmatic District and can never go to my councilperson because he doesn't even see me as human. He stands with people who wish to cause harm to black people and has refused to speak to me. Therefore, thank goodness, I can rely on my councilmembers at large for representation. I say this to say, representation is crucial. I urge you to prioritize time so that all councilmembers have input with the redistricting process as well as the general public, so that we as a city can truly move in the direction that represents all Philadelphians. We cannot continue to point fingers at Harrisburg while emulating the same unfair and oppressive practices here in our city. Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing that can be changed, nothing can be changed until it's faced. James Baldwin. I thank you all today for hosting this hearing, but I urge you to include the voices of the public and all City Council members to make this wrong right. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. Mr. Christmas?
Yes, sir.
That the last person listed?
Yes, that was the last person listed, but two people that we had to skip because they weren't previously available are now available, the first of which is Tyrell Grant.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the ones that we skipped. Okay, cool. Tyrell Grant. Mr. Grant?
I'm a female, but good morning, everyone.
My bad. Just state your name for the record.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tyrell Grant. I'm a canvasser for One PA, and I'm testifying in regards to the Bill Number Twenty-Two Triple-O-Three. I want to testify against how this whole process of redistricting and drawing maps in our city has gone. Building a map that represents our community should definitely include our communities. You need to hear from us, the community, about our ideas of how we think our community looks. We're the ones living there and experiencing this lack of funding and lack of representation. When I started with One PA, I came in on the census campaign. We educated people about what it meant and why it was important. Learned about the census for my community and myself, I learned about what it meant and why it was important. We urged people about the deadline and why we needed to get it done. We educated people on all of the steps on how to be sure that everyone was counted in a household, from babies to people incarcerated. We had to be sure that the number was accurate because five people undercounted is five people underfunded. After the number came out, we bent toward people about the process of redistricting. My organization, One PA, ran a campaign to build unity maps with our community. People were ecstatic to take part and draw a draft on what their everyday district looked like to them. We had a month-long process about how to redraw these maps that people did not know about. It took us two years to educate and build that foundation of trust, and City Council wants to do all of this in two weeks. That's two different timeframes. We need time to educate our communities about this process and to hear from them. This process is unfair and does not accommodate people in our communities. In fact, it puts us back into the same poverty we faced over the last ten years. Transparency is key in making these maps true assessments of what our communities look like, including those who can't speak for themselves, such as children and incarcerated people. Spending time to educate and clear evaluations, we should give everyone a chance to vote on these maps for the next upcoming elections in 2023, 2027, and 2031. Yes, 2031 seems so far away, and that's why we have to make these maps count. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate you.
Our final witness is Rachel Robinson.
Good morning. Just state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Robinson. Thank you for the time today to speak. So, I am a member of District Council Three. I'm represented by Councilperson Gauthier. I just want to thank her for being a thoughtful and responsive councilperson. And the reason I know that she's thoughtful and responsive is because I grew up in a city that did not have thoughtful and responsive representation because it was a city that was split among representation. It was cracked. No one knew who to turn to when there was a problem. And I don't want to see people in my city face that situation. I am concerned about such places as, sorry, give me one second. I'm concerned about such places as Ward Forty-Two, Majority Hispanic Ward, that is split three ways. If it's split three ways, that means that it's not represented, at least not on a neighborhood level. Yes, we have representation by councilpeople at large, but that's, if we have at large, why do we have, like, you know, districts? We have districts to represent neighborhoods, and if the neighborhood is split up, it's not representing that neighborhood, and that neighborhood's not represented, and that's not democracy. And we need democracy in our city. We need democracy in Philadelphia. And there's other places, like it's not just Ward Forty-Two, also Ward Fifty-Four is also split up. Neighborhoods are split, and therefore neighborhoods aren't represented, and that's not okay for Philadelphia to run without the voices of the people. I also think that this process of redistricting just doesn't make sense. Part of the reason that I find Councilperson Gauthier to be so responsive is that she was chosen by the people of the Third District. She didn't choose, like, she chose to run, but she didn't get to choose who lived in the Third District. And when we have this process where the councilpeople draw the maps, you guys are choosing who you represent, and that's not fair. That's not democracy. You don't get to choose us, we choose you. And so, I don't think that these maps should be drawn by you. I realize that's not maybe time for this redistricting cycle, but I would really encourage a councilperson with political will and bravery to draft something to propose that the lines be drawn by citizens. And that's what I would like to see. So, thank you again for this time. Please vote no on this bill and make it represent us, make it represent Philadelphia, the city that I know that you love. Have a good one.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
If Council President?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Robinson for her kind comments. That means a lot.
Take it anytime we can. I'm telling you, claim it. Thank you, Councilwoman. There'll be no further questions from members, the committee, and the witnesses that testified. As I will ask of anyone else who's present at a hearing whose name we have failed to call and wishes to offer testimony in the bill being considered today. And here none, I want to thank all the witnesses for their participation today. We value your opinion, believe it or not. We really do. Now, I now invite all witnesses to please disconnect from the hearing. Before we go into our public meeting, we will now pause the proceeding briefly as multiple participants leave the hearing. I do want to say, we got elected to do a difficult job, and we love the fact that we have that responsibility to do a difficult job. And I got to tell you, redistricting is a very challenging job in terms of try to reflect the values of all. But every now and then, you get population growth that is dramatic, dramatic swings. You try as best possible to keep communities intact. We have these things called divisions, and that's how you have to apply to various areas. And the division may not be drawn in a straight line. It may be a little jagged. So, this is a challenge, and not making any excuses for us, but I just want to let people know, we do hear what you say, and we have tried our best, and we will continue to try our best to reflect those issues that you have raised today, which is why we appreciate so much hearing your testimony. Okay, so we're going to pause briefly, allow the participants to leave the hearing in like five minutes if we can. Mr. Modesto? Well, we don't need five minutes. Ready? Everybody pulled off?
Yes, they are.
Okay, we're good. Well, we'll go right into it. All right, we will now go into our public meeting to consider the action to be taken on the bill before the committee today. Now convene the public meeting. Mr. Christmas, will you please call a roll to take attendance, and members that are present will please indicate that you are present when your name is called. Mr. Christmas, call a roll.
Council Lady Bass?
Good morning. I am present.
Council Lady Brooks?
Good morning. I'm present.
Councilman Don?
Good morning. Present.
Council Lady Gauthier?
Present.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson?
Present.
Councilman Green?
I am present.
Council Lady Gibbs? Councilman Johnson?
Present.
Councilman Jones?
Present.
Councilman O? Councilman O'Neil?
Present.
Council Lady Parker?
Good morning. Present.
Council Lady Quinona Sanchez?
Present.
Councilman Squilla?
Present.
Councilman Thomas?
Present.
Council President Clark?
Present.
So, the chair now recognizes Councilmember Parker for a motion on Bill, I'm sorry, we are now going into the public meeting, and the chair recognizes Councilmember Parker for a motion on Bill Number Two-Two-Zero-Zero-Zero-Three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the public hearing and public meeting on Bill Number Two-Two-Zero-Zero-Zero-Three be recessed to Wednesday, February the second, 2022, at 10:00 a.m.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second at the public hearing and public meeting on Bill Number Two-Two-Zero-Zero-Zero-Three be recessed to Wednesday, February second, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries in the public hearing and public meeting on Bill Number Two-Two-Zero-Zero-Zero-Three is recessed to Wednesday, February second, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. This concludes the business before the committee at a hold today. I want to thank you all very much for your participation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Appreciate you.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.